Okay, thank you, everybody. This is the town of Andover Board of Finance meeting for Wednesday, March twenty seventh. Um, we'll go ahead and start by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is public speak. I don't see anybody from the public. Eric, do you and your screen?
Uh, no, there does not appear to be anybody here from the public.
Okay. All right.
How come they don't love us?
We're meeting too often for them. They don't know. Wow, it's a loofah thing. Sorry. Um, okay, we'll move into Agenda Item Three, which is changes or additions to the agenda. Does anybody have any proposed changes or additions to the agenda for tonight?
I'm all set.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to old business. The first one is four A, review the policy for AES capital expenditures. I don't know if we have any new on that.
Yeah, so I can speak to that, Mark. Um, you know, I had a chance last week after the CIP meeting on Thursday, I met with Shannon for a bit. We sat down and talked about sort of conceptually where we were and set up a meeting for tomorrow night. Uh, at my place, hopefully we'll have a couple of hours to sit down and actually draft. Uh, we didn't make progress on language. We just sort of talked about, you know, where we were and everything because it's been a while. So, excuse me, with last week having both Board of Finance and Board and CIP meetings, no, I didn't have a ton of time. So, we're hoping to-
It sounds like progress and re-engagement. So, that's something, right?
Yeah, we're hoping to reach some real progress tomorrow night.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on that?
The, the only thing I would say to that is that, uh, the audit that we are submitting, um, does assume that the hundred and twelve thousand dollar surplus from AES will be put in that capital account. So, um, that was based on the Board of Finance agreeing to the earlier amount, even though the amount has changed. So, just as a point, um, that's, and I know they haven't given us anything. We don't actually have the money. But that is what was, that is what the audit is, is basically claiming. So, I think as we file it, we probably ought to figure out how to actually get that money. Um, you know.
Eric, remind us how that, that was decided? You're saying the Board of Finance decided that?
So, the Board of Finance, if you remember back last, last summer when the AES wanted to do the parking lot.
Okay.
What was agreed was that they transfer a check.
Okay.
And you requested a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. They originally wrote a check for like one twenty-four, uh, which they then took back because they didn't actually have one twenty-four to write. Um, and the, the final number, I think, was like one twelve.
Thank you for reminding. I get it. I just, you know, I wanted to make sure, right? It was because it was the parking lot. And it had, just to clarify, it was that, right? That we weren't just deciding we were gonna transfer the balance. And the only other thing I wanted to add, Mark, um, hopefully with Rob talking to Shannon tomorrow night, I think we had made progress at that last meeting discussing it. We're hopefully, you know, a lot got discussed, a lot of points were made, and I know Shannon now understands that it, there was gonna be money put in it besides just the transferring money. So, I'm, I wish you luck and thank you for taking that on. Hopefully, it'll be a productive meeting. That's all.
Rob, thank you. The only thing I want to add to that is, and I could be misspeaking, so just bear with me, but, um, I have a memory from a discussion, it was either at the CIP meeting or just after, because Celeste was there and Shannon was there, and I'm not sure they have one twelve anymore. Eric, do you recall what I'm talking about? I feel like it was a slightly lower figure.
Uh, as far as I know, that was the last number the auditor gave me.
All right.
Was that what their surplus was.
Okay, I'll have to-
Which is not to say they didn't decide to do something else with their surplus. They could have, but that's not what, what was in the audit.
Yeah, I don't know that they've spent money per se. I, I'm not really clear on this, but for some reason I had a different number in my head. It looks just not, not a huge difference, but, um, you know, more like one oh three or something like that. Uh, so that's something I'll have to nail down. I'll talk to Shannon tomorrow night about that, too. Uh, I, I can't remember with Celeste or her who mentioned that to me, uh, last week. But it may be, because we're putting in a hundred thousand is the idea, uh, from the town side. And the idea was that they had one oh something on their side, and then we were discussing at that CIP meeting. We talked about the project that could be two hundred-ish and that would cover. So, that's, that's the, those are the figures I had in my head, but I, I honestly can't recall well enough now. So, I'll let it ride. I'll let you guys know what I know when I know it. Um, but I think the one twelve may be a touch high.
Any other comments or questions on that?
Just a clarification, um, they will get the hundred and whatever put into the capital fund plus a hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget added to it. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. I thought that they were giving a hundred and something back to the town and then going forward, we were to add a hundred thousand dollars, but-
Well, that's basically, because the town controls the account, so they'll have to, they'll have to transfer the money to the town. And then they'll move into that account, right?
The grand total would be like two hundred, though, is the point.
Yeah, next fiscal year, once we had a chance to, to move that money in.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that. Thanks.
And then, Mark, is it, they still, of course, want to go forward with the parking lot? Hopefully, they'll be, are we not talking about that?
Uh, when we get to CIP.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know.
That, that may be a second on the priority list.
Okay, no problem.
Other questions? Okay, well, I guess let's move on to Item Four B, which is review of budget to actual. Um, we have this in our packet. Um, I have not had a chance to even open this till tonight, but I don't know if anybody has any specific questions. Eric, you have anything that needs to be highlighted?
Uh, no, at this point, overall, you know, we're in good shape. We don't really have any specific issues. So, so I'm, budget-wise, right now, I don't see any issues with us through the end of the year.
So.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, as you said, so Eric, is it normal that we would be at this point, um, in the year or in the budget, still short, you know, two million dollars in tax revenue, property tax revenue, a million dollars in government revenues? I'm just looking at the short, the shortages so far, like, does that, we fully intend to get all that by?
Yeah, so the state is notoriously late for supplying the full freight for, uh, ECS or educational cost sharing. And that is, that is the bulk of what we get from the state. So, usually this time of year, we're still a million short, um, on ECS funding. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's not at all surprising. They paid us basically half of what they owe us for a year. We will get that before the end of the year. Um, but they'll take their, uh, their time in, in sending that to us.
And with the property taxes, though, like you would think they're due in July, right? And here we are in almost-
Other quarterly, some of them, Bill.
No, so, so the way it works is automobile taxes are one time a year. Um, real estate is quarterly, so that's four times a year. So, we expect a very significant fraction of taxes, you know, are due in the month of April.
Yep, I forgot about that. Okay, thank you.
Um, can I, Mark, real quick, um, with, with, I backing up too. I apologize, I missed it. Um, I was looking at the, the agenda and I don't see that we have CIP liaison on there. Can we add it?
Um, well, we can just do it under board open discussion, I suppose.
Okay. That's actually under, under Item Nine Liaison Reports.
Yeah.
That's what we normally deal with.
Oh, 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 sorry, I see it now. Yep, my fault. Okay.
Good.
Other questions about the budget today, actual, or actuals to budget year-to-date?
And remember, we budget fairly closely overall. So, usually by the end of the year, roughly one-third of the line items that we have, the individual line items are over. But overall, if we look at department budgets, we're in pretty good shape across the board with department budgets. So, I'm not seeing any major shortfalls that we're gonna need to account for, um, you know, in this budget. Other than we will be over in the transportation drivers, um, there'll definitely be some areas where we're over, but overall in the budget, we're in good shape and we can absorb those overages and still be in the black for the year.
Yeah, I mean, some of our stuff like sand and salt and DPW overtime are probably under significantly, right? So-
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now, from snow removal. Like fifty-two, fifty-four hundred.
Anyway.
Yeah, for, for this year.
Yep.
We could still have a snow event. We shouldn't talk too loudly.
Well, no, and-
For our discussion earlier.
And believe it or not, we have used an awful lot of salt this year. Because the, the funny things is the snowier years don't necessarily correspond to when we use the most snow. The-
Where we had a lot of rain events with freezing, yeah.
We have more icing. So, it's, it's kind of an odd, odd thing in that.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that. That's, that's interesting, good point, Eric. Okay, any other questions about the budget? Okay, hearing none, I guess we'll move on. The next item is check register, same thing. Any specific questions on that? Usual big items, big ticket items are there. Town of Mansfield, what's that, Eric? Is that the, uh, waste or health department?
Town of Mansfield, uh, there's two things we pay the Town of Mansfield for. The first is they are the fiduciary for the Eastern Islands Health District. That's where the majority of the money we pay. We also pay them a small sum because they manage some of the programs for Mid-Nirac, which is our hazardous waste consortium. So, you'll see two payments to Town of Mansfield for that. Most of the money is, would be the Health District.
Barton and Lagarducci LLC.
So, Barton, that's Barton and Le Judas. They are the engineering- Yeah. Don't ask me why, but that's how they pronounce it. That is the engineering firm behind it. To, uh, do the Route three sixteen connectivity study.
Okay.
Um, and grant application. That is, that is actually funded. Um, that is a congressional or a legislative grant that we got to pay for that. So, that's not, I mean, we're paying it, but, but it's not, we, you know, that's not tax dollars.
It's covered, yeah. Okay, got it.
And, and what is, just curious, what is spring?
What is what?
There's a line item, it's called a spring, S-P-R-I-N-G, right under Tuttle. Robert Tuttle, that's, it's like fourteen thousand seven hundred, but I'm just, I'm just curious what is, what is-
Oh, that, that goes to, that's basically health, uh, um, payments. Why that's listed as that, I don't know, but-
I was just curious when I saw the word spring, I was like, oh, spring cleanup, like, what's spring?
I wonder if the note they put in there had to do with the spring payment or something. Or is it, it's a monthly payment, right?
No, it is spring, it's, it's-
It probably should put Q two, Q three or something like that, you know?
Yeah, so that is one of their, so that is basically health and benefits payments from the town. Um, that's what that is. Spring is, I think that's the deorganization that actually manages the RAM Consortium, um, why it doesn't say RAM Consortium, I don't know. The one below it is the monthly payment to AES. And the ACH below that is our, uh, our monthly payment to RAM.
Yep.
Um, AES is the same payment every month. RAM, they give us basically a schedule a year ahead of time, which is based on past experience when they need what money. So, each, each month, the RAM one varies every month. But the AES, we give them the same amount every month, because, you know.
Yeah, so it's just a weird, it was just a weird one. That's the name, that's all I was asking about.
Yeah, yeah, no, that should be renamed and that should say something like, I don't know, Healthcare Consortium or something like that.
Yeah.
I have a related question, Eric, just because you've mentioned before. I know she's part of the treasurer, you know, works in, is she, you've mentioned before she's in Florida. Has she been checking in? Is she working remotely? Is?
Yeah, she's working remotely.
Oh, okay.
Um, so we do have contact with her. She's just, you know.
I mean, she's able to take meetings if she has to, or?
Yeah, and like, you can always, you know, I, we still talk to her and, and go back and forth and she still, you know, reconciles remotely. So, I mean, she can function. It's easier when she's local, but, but it's functional having her in Florida.
No, gotcha. I mean, I know she doesn't want to hang on and be the treasurer forever. And we've said we're lucky to have her, so I just wanted to make sure she's still in contact and if she needs to, I mean, that's the great thing about remote, you could be anywhere. I was in Vermont on vacation, did one of these meetings, so, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Another just curiosity, uh, what is Cargill Inc.? Just curious.
Cargill, that's who we get salt from.
Oh.
That's the salt, Bill.
Thanks.
Yep. No, that's probably a fairly large payment.
Yeah, I remember that one, though. Yeah.
Yep.
Any others? Okay, I guess we'll go on to audit review. So, Eric, you know, my understanding is that, you know, we've approved the budget. This is gonna be submitted to the state. Obviously, we still have the open item of the corrective action plan, which we're working on scheduling a meeting to discuss with the various entities, including the, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, the Treasurer, et cetera.
Yep. That's a pretty good summary. Mike is planning on, I think, submitting the audit, uh, this week. I signed the, uh, the Audit Review Notes, uh, the Andover Representation Letter. Um, and forwarded to Cheryl to sign. Um, and usually the, the school signs a separate management, uh, letter, um, also to the auditor. So, hopefully that will be accomplished in the next couple of days and Mike can hit send on the audit.
Because that's important, right, Eric? Because March ends the end of, I knew we were all hoping to get it submitted right by the end of March.
More.
And that, that comes this week and with the holiday and all, so hopefully there's a plan.
Friday, yeah.
Yeah, I know Monday's the first, so you feel like that's all in line, like you said, and hopefully Cheryl sign, I mean, I know we voted it in at the last meeting or whatever.
Right, Mike sent it to me this morning. I printed it out, signed it, sent it to Cheryl, so all she has to do is sign it.
Yep, sounds good.
So, I don't think it'll be a problem on the town end. And there's no reason the school can't, couldn't have turned their end around today also.
Okay. Sounds good. I know that March thirty-first is this week, that's all. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. No other questions or comments in that item? We'll move on to five A, which is the new business DPW equipment schedule. Get out your magnifying glasses and you can look at the schedule.
I need mine, printed it.
So, I think Jay did send you this before.
He did.
Separately in, in Excel, so you can see it, you know, in, in big screen, but I asked that this gets put in the packet. Because what happens is every year or two, the equipment schedule and the equipment request list for Public Works gets updated. And then it gets chopped around to CIP, Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. And what CIP does is reviews the request list and say, yes, that makes sense, or no, it doesn't. So, they've submitted it to CIP. CIP has agreed to endorse the capital equipment plan. Um, and so then it goes on to you. Um, and um, that's important because future decisions on what equipment we make or buy, you know, get based off of that. Um, and so what I've been working with Jay on is to put it all in a more coherent, uh, set of data than he was presenting before. He had all the information. He just was presenting it in a very non-easy to understand. So, I think we've reduced it to something that's easy to review and understand, you know, what the plan is and why. So, I, I don't think you need to make any action on this. There's, there's nothing you need to do. This is just for your information as the Board of Finance. So, you can kind of keep it in the back of your head and know, you know, in a few years, what you're likely to see for an equipment request.
Eric, when, when will the, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I forget this, but when will the referendum be on the new mower?
That's a good question. So, I am working furiously with the town's attorney to get all the things that we need to get together for the public meeting. Because there's two lot line adjustments, there's at least, uh, um, three ordinances that the Board of Selectmen, you know, want to put through. Um, and then there is the grant request for the AES field and, uh, you know, and then the request for the mower. So, there's gonna be a lot at that meeting. You know, I'm, I honestly don't have everything collated. Um, I'm missing a couple of things. Oh, and the, you know, so I've got most of it. Um, but I don't have all of it. And the board was kind of adamant that they only wanted to have one meeting. So, I'm gonna hope that at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we can identify a date. Um, and I've talked a little bit about the town clerk, uh, for that. And then also that at the next meeting, the Board of Selectmen has to officially set the date for the annual town budget meeting. Um, so that should be early May.
Because Eric, I know we've been talking about this for months, so it's just, and I, I'm not putting any blame at all, but it just will help us as a board making decisions, you know, that are current with the budget. You know, we want to have the input. We've had plenty of meetings and costs and, you know, things that are gonna be this year. Like you said, there's, there's multiple things that will help us make decisions, so. I would hope, like, when you say it's after the next Board of Selectmen meeting, isn't that usually mid-month or like the tenth or something?
Yeah, next Board of Selectmen meeting is the eighth.
I don't have a calendar.
At that meeting, when they want to schedule.
Because I would hope, I mean, because we're gonna be stuck, we'll all, I mean, obviously, we'll be having budget meetings moving forward, so that was a really good question. So, hopefully they prepared, be prepared since there's weeks before that to maybe set a date that next week or something, or whenever.
Yeah, we'd have to do a couple of weeks out because we still have to do public notice and a bunch of things. But I can see it, doing it more towards the third week in April. Um, that would certainly be my goal, is to get that done. So, we have that meeting and then have the budget meeting. Um,
Well, we need some time in before, you know, it's just gonna push everything back. If everything's been pushed back a year and we don't have the stuff in our hands, I want to have enough time to ponder what the public says if we have to go, but I, I understand what you're hoping for.
But because of the way we're budgeting now, where we're putting money in permanent funds, we're basically spending money at this point that has already been allocated up to this point. So, I don't think that should-
You're saying my, my fear or uneasiness with it is we've made decisions and never really brought it to the public meeting. So, I just want to have their input on it. I agree with you that we've decided how we'll fund it and we'll put certain amounts in. You know, and, and now there's going to be, like you said, we're gonna be looking at this public works projection and the, the equipment and that'll be a time cycle. I know it's different things, but, um, yeah, I mean, I, especially the big items like the tankers and the trucks and the this and the that, you know, you wanna, I, I know that their needs or whatever, you know, so some things are gonna dictate that we can't have the public input because we're gonna have to do it if something just breaks down and it doesn't work anymore and the town needs it. But that's, that's my point.
Understood.
Thanks.
Any other questions on those documents? It's actually a good layout looking at it. So, kudos to you and Jay to get that organized. It's, uh, it's pretty clear, you know, it lays it out well. You see the progression, you see the changes. You know, it makes sense. So, I think it's well done.
One question, just on the equipment. I think, um, Bill was alluding to this, too. Eric, is that, did we decide at the last budget meeting and what the Board of Selectmen had hoped for, that the trailer will be purchased out of funds from this year?
Right, yes. That, that, that was the Board of Finance decision. Not, that was not actually the Board of Selectmen's decision, but that's okay.
Well, I mean, I had listened to the Board of Selectmen's select, uh, idea or the way they wanted it to go, and I brought it up at the Board of Finance. So, thank you for that correction, right? And then we did vote on it.
Yes, you did vote on it.
Correct.
And we've actually purchased the trailer and it's sitting at Public Works at the moment.
That was my next question.
Some things get done quickly. That's great.
Well, once it get, once all three boards have approved it, you know, then it's just a question of me doing the paperwork. So, so, you know.
Plus, plus we could have, they could have sold it if, if we didn't act on it, right? I mean, they-
Yeah.
It was right there, yeah.
It was right there, so you like to act fast and not lose that, so.
Yeah, we chose to avoid the debt services, what we did. That was last meeting.
Perfect.
Any other questions on the DPW heavy equipment?
Nah, I guess my last question would be just out of curiosity. I know you talked about this in the past, uh, Eric. But you look at that frontline spare truck that's like way past its usable service. It looks like we've had it for twenty-six years and usable service is fifteen, like, would we ever just like sell that just to get rid of it and get a little money for it, or is it way beyond that? Or what's the plan for that truck? Just out of curiosity.
So, right now, that's our spare truck. Um, so we have three trucks. The oldest of our frontline service trucks is a two thousand and four, and then the ninety-seven Ford is an emergency spare. Um, the two thousand and four is a piece of junk. Um, um, we're actually gonna get rid of the two thousand and four and keep the ninety-seven because the ninety-seven is way more reliable and way better condition than the two thousand and four. And there were a couple of reasons for that. First of all, um, two thousand and four, they didn't want to spend the money. Um, so they bought a really cheap plow truck. Um, and that's cost us. Um, we've put over the life of that equipment, you know, we've put like a, almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars into maintenance of that piece of equipment. Um, and we're actually, it's actually, we've taken it off the road now. Um, because we blew the power steering, uh, unit in the vehicle. So, so basically, the reason we're keeping the ninety-seven is because it's a lot better than our two thousand and four. Um, it was an older, the older Fords were all the pre, uh, pollution equipment. So, they had a lot less problems overall. And we have had to spend the money to completely redo the brakes on it. Um, but right now, that vehicle's fully functional, so that will remain our spare plow truck, even though it's really old.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, I guess we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of, uh, capital purchase process form. So, I think, can kind of see what's, uh, going on here. Eric, you're looking for a form to kind of track these capital projects. Um, do you want to talk to this? Um, do you want to talk to this?
Sure. So basically, um, this wasn't an audit finding. But one of the recommendations the auditor put in there is that. We produce a form to track capital purchases. And the reason is every year they come out, they do an audit and they pull, you know, twenty percent or thirty percent of our major. And say, okay, give me all the supporting documentation for this. And we have it all, but we've never kept it in a coherent package. So.
Meeting agendas and things, minutes and stuff like that.
Right. So what it takes is I then have to go back through the Board of Selectmen meetings. Figure out what month it got approved, make a copy of that, do the same thing for Board of Finance, do the same thing for C I P. So instead we have a form which tracks that. And we put a packet together and it gets kept in the finance office. And next year when we, they ask for that. We just pull out the packet, hand them the packet and go, um, and make everybody's life easier. So that was an easy audit recommendation. Um, this I think should. Essentially outline all the players so that we, we say, you know, what type of capital expense it is. What we based the approval on, what boards approved it and when, when I signed it and out it goes. So.
My, my comment on the, on the form itself is, is just generally that there's no place to put the actual. Definition of the project there. Um, so you want to come up with something there? I mean, it's fine. I mean, I think that the other fields of data are appropriate.
Okay.
Um, you know, you. I don't think you really need anything, anything more. Um. You know, the public meeting required, yes, no, and then date, you might want to have date approved or something like that. I guess. By maybe by definition, it's date approved. So, um. So that's probably fine. But I think, yeah, other than just having a place to describe, you know, give it a, give it a project name and then give it a little brief description. This project, this is to approve the purchase of a, you know, trailer for the, you know, D P W.
Okay, I can certainly add that. That makes sense.
I, I just had a quick question on the approval based on and what's right underneath that. You've got R F P and like a little. Line there for, I assume yes, no, whatever. And then state contract. Should there, is there supposed to be like, uh, are there supposed to be two separate things? Should there be a spot?
Check what checkbox.
That off or not? Uh, that, that line just looked a little wonky to me and I, I want to make sure that that's what you're intending.
Yeah, you want to make it clear what's to be filled in.
Yeah, I mean, I just assumed if, if it was an R F P, we would put our R F P number on there. Make that easy. And we're going to put a copy of the R F P in the packet. If it's a state contract. You know, I guess we could put a thing in there to put the state contract bid number on if you wanted to see that. Um.
Or just make it clear by saying circle one or something.
They should be separated in some way. It was, was by my thought, like, because.
Yep.
Just so it's clear, like when this, when you think about how this would actually be filled out and then two years later, somebody wants to look at it. You know.
Absolutely.
So that it makes sense. But otherwise, yeah, I think this is a good form.
Okay.
I like it.
Okay, I can certainly make those corrections. You want to see it again next month and whatever I came up with?
Yes, yes.
Not a problem.
Looks good though. Just a couple of extra things.
Other comments or questions, input on the forum? Okay, I guess we'll go on to item five C, which is the Kirma budget.
So I'm bringing this to you because every year they come back and tell us what our actual increases are going to be. So we're locked in for a three-year window with the, they give us basically what our maximum rate increase year over year would be. Um, but we don't necessarily actually get charged that. It's based on our claims history. What, um, but basically they're giving us the max rate increase for both liability, uh, and workers comp. Um, on the workers comp side, we did have one moderately significant claim from Public Works. Um, that wasn't related to an accident, but it was related to somebody who had a medical emergency. Um, while he was at work. As far as the, the lap policy, uh, there was a very significant claim by A E S. That was about thirty five thousand dollars related to their plumbing system. So that blew our, uh, lap rate up. Um, so those two things combined, they're giving us, uh, the max contractual rate increase they could. Um, but I'd already accounted for that in the budget. So it just means the budget's not going to go down. Now that they've given us the final rate increase, but that's the reason why. So.
Those two claims kicked us up to their, you know, contractual maximum, basically. Yeah.
Correct, correct.
I'm actually vaguely surprised that the A E S public issue was covered. I'm glad it was. Uh, you know, this is not my bailiwick. I, I do environmental claims, so it's a little different. But I usually know my way around a liability policy and I was thinking, you know. Uh, but whatever, I'm glad they, they helped with it because obviously it was a, you know.
And I just want to comment too, I'm surprised and I don't want to get into anybody's personal business or even what a medical emergency was, but. I've dealt with Kirma a lot too. So I'm surprised that if someone had a medical emergency at work that wasn't caused by work. That there was a claim against that. I mean, I could see where an individual would want to do that, but having it affect our town rates. Is shocking to me having worked with Kirma all the time. So. I, I mean.
But remember he's on the town's health insurance plan. So it's billed against the town one way or the other. It just makes whether.
No, but I mean, if you have, it's just in not talking, if you have a personal health, something, whatever. Like I'm at work and some health thing happens to me, I'm just going to go through however I'm insured. I'm not going to the town for my personal, you know, that's why the town offers insurance. And I, again, I want everybody to be healthy. I'm all about wellness. So I'm not getting, this is shocking to me. So are you able to? I'll look in my packet. I thought I had printed that out. Um, and it's hard for me to shuffle through. So I'll take a look at that. But yeah, that's shocking that someone's personal illness would affect a town's policy. So.
Well, I mean, if you have somebody that's working in the shop and has a heart attack, if it occurs while they're working. That is.
Oh, we have those things. We.
Right?
No, we have things that happen like that all the time. Again, I don't want to fight anybody's personal thing, but. I could be walking from my car into my job and I unfortunately have that happen to me. And I, it wouldn't be a work issue at all. It would be a personal health issue and my health insurance would take care of it. So again, I can't wrap my head around your way of thinking with this. But again, probably an off-camera thing. It, it's only because you're bringing it up as a finance thing and it's affecting the town's policy is shocking to me because I've never seen that happen.
Sure.
Just because it doesn't matter where it happens as long as, I mean. I've had people get injured at work and have to go in for surgery. And that's, you know, so that's all. Just, I don't want to go on and on about it because I want everybody to be well, but. It's pretty surprising to me and that at least it, in kind of you're siding with them. So you're not. The voice of kind of asking the questions to determine what made that happen. Unless.
But it's, it's, it's ultimately, it's not for me to decide. It's for Kerma to decide whether that is a legitimate claim.
Yeah.
So an employee has the right to submit.
And I said that, please, when you talk, it sound, right, I do get that. And I said, I want, I can understand why the employee would do that. But I probably want information on both sides and it looks like Rob knows a lot about it. So I'll defer to him. But so did you get a report back stating, Eric, that that particular situation was covered under Kirma?
Kerma made a determination that that was a covered claim.
Wow. Interesting.
However, the only thing that occurs to me, and this is insurance hat on, but I'm not a health insurance guy. But you know, the, the, the thing that ultimately comes to mind is subrogation. Uh, we don't know necessarily if Kerma will go subrogate. Against the health insurer for the individual.
If they did, they shouldn't raise our rates then.
Exactly. And that's.
Well, yeah, that's where it gets tricky and I, I'm not an actuary, but, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where it gets tricky. This is where, you know, when you make a claim, even if it isn't covered. You know, it can, it can trip some things. So I don't know and I'm, I'm probably, I'm outside my area of expertise, but. It, it occurs to me that, I mean, first blush, just, just looking at it, I actually had the same reaction Joanne had, which is. Wait a minute, you know, that's not really a work comp thing, but the work comp carrier said it was covered. So. Uh, a little weird.
Work with Kerma a lot. I mean, I'm involved in investigations with Kerma. So I'm. I, I have experience with this or I wouldn't be bringing it up. So that's.
But generally speaking, insurance company doesn't go out and go, oh yeah, sure. We'll cover something that's not covered. So it, it's a little weird. I don't know. I don't know what to do with it.
Like I said, I would never, you know, be upset that an employee is going to try, I just, if they have health insurance. I don't know what the claim would be, but anyways, again, interesting. Thank you for that subtext. That's going to cost surprising. I'm glad people have health insurance too, but, um, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Other, uh, questions or comments? Okay, I guess let's move over to, uh, seven, uh, agenda item seven is our budget discussion. So we had a couple.
For a little minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm jumping out of time. Those are usually at the end. So meeting minutes for February twenty eight, twenty twenty four, um. Be looking for somebody to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I'll go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
I'm making motion to approve as submitted.
Okay. Second, Rob, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So we will, uh, move on to the next agenda item and that is the approval of the meeting minutes for. I'm sorry, should have called them out, but March thirteenth, these are separate agenda item. This is the March thirteenth meeting minutes. Anybody want to make a motion to approve? That's the special budget meeting workshop.
I will make a motion to approve the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty four special budget meeting minutes.
Okay, in a second. Louise seconds, thank you. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Okay, very good. Thank you. Now we can move on to agenda item seven, which is the budget discussion. We have three subtopics listed here. The first is the A E S gymnasium floor. Uh, is this one that Louise wanted to add? Louise, you had a question on that? You wanted to add that into for discussion? Yeah.
That's your mute. You still muted?
Okay, that's better. Yeah, I'm just curious. I had given a, um, a question. Back a couple of weeks ago and I was just kind of curious why we're doing the entire thing and we're not splitting. It with the A E S. Because I know we use it and A E S uses the floor as well. So is this going to be a continual thing?
I would guess so. I, you know, the, kind of the, the running. Philosophy we've had regarding the gym, um. The gym work that's been done is that A, the town's going to pay for it one way or the other. And B, uh, a lot of the activities that occur within the gym, though by now means all. But a lot of the activities, uh, are town-related activities. So the rec leagues, the town meetings, the, you know. Few other things that happened there. I don't really know exactly all that goes on there. But that's, that's kind of been something that's been. Championed by the rec commission. So that's, that's where this, this particular. Uh, request is coming from. And actually, Brian, you're on that. So you, you might want to have a, you, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. But that's really my understanding. And that's why, you know, we, we did this for the seating, um, have it a request to help. Support the refund, the refinishing of the floor and also to replace some of the fans. So. All three of those, I think, fit under that rubric that, you know, we're, we're trying to. Basically support the infrastructure that is, uh, partially used by the town outside of school activities.
So liability wise, is something already happened there? Is the town on the hook for that? Or is this the A E S on the hook for that?
For which? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Is it the town or the A E S on the hook if there's any liability issue?
It doesn't actually matter in the sense that the town pays a hundred percent of the. Insurance bills for the town. The school does not pay into the insurance. Um, we as a town funded on our side, all of the Kirma bills. Um, so you know, the only thing they pay for is the Chubbs rider policy. That covers the oil tanks, the in-ground oil tanks at the elementary school. Everything else the town assumes. So.
Okay.
They have in-ground oil tanks?
Yes.
How old are they?
Old.
Hmm.
Wow.
And they plan to maintain insurance on them.
Okay. Maybe we could talk about that at some point. Maybe not now, but that's a big. Flag for me, just based on what I do for work, uh, depending on how, on their age. And what composition those tanks are. Do you know what they're made out of, Eric? Off the top of your head?
Nope, I don't.
Cause if those are fiberglass tanks, the new tanks are fiberglass, the old tanks are stainless steel.
If they're old.
And that's a bad, bad story.
But.
Yeah, but they just don't let, hmm. Okay, we'll talk about that some other time. Eric, I'd like to maybe have a sidebar on that at some point because that scares me.
It's very scary if that had a leak. That, that's like, woo.
This is my point. It doesn't take much and you don't know because, okay, in, in the course of my career, I've, I've had a bajillion tank claims. And the thing is, underground storage tanks with oil in them, when they start to leak, you barely know it. It's such a small, slow thing. You get a pinhole and a little bit dribbles out. And the next thing you know, it's gone on for years and you have a whole plume coming off of it. And only when it gets really bad, do you notice, oh, wait a minute, the, the level of the tank is low or we're getting water in the furnace. The things that start to happen when things get really mixed up in there. By that point, you have a disaster.
Yeah, you have a huge excavation and a lot of hazardous fill, right? So.
Uh, it, it, it becomes a, it can be, it depends on the scenario. And it's not like we don't know how to clean up oil leaks, but the, the point is these things can spiral very quickly. And a modern day liability policy, I don't know what we have for our entire insurance program. Uh, I tried to stay out of it because I work for insurance company, but you know, it. The modern day liability policies exclude pollution. So you, you're in a situation where if you have this old tank in the ground. And it rots out on you, rusts out on you. Cause it's been in the ground fifteen, twenty, however many years, especially if it's sitting in the water table, you got a real problem on your hands. So that one. I had no idea that we still have stuff buried in this town. Uh, you, you want it endorsed. You do not want that in the, in the ground. And so sooner rather than later, I don't even, uh, depending on the age of the tanks and the composition thereof. That's another thing to put on their capital list to get the, the heck out of that, uh, get those things out of the ground. Cause the longer you wait, the more recording disaster.
I, I agree a hundred percent. I, I've had some experience of that too, Rob, and disaster. So we should find that out.
So let's put that in the agenda for next meeting. Maybe we can have somebody, I don't know if somebody from school needs to represent or give us a report on that. Um, but I think that that point is well taken. Sooner we start talking about it, the better off we'll be for planning.
Installation date, composition, you know, that sort of thing. I mean, if there's single wall system tanks, which are really the old ones. I'm hoping they're not, but if they are, good God. If they're fiberglass tanks.
No problem.
Okay, I'm not going to freak, but you know, i- if they're the older tanks or even a double. Okay, I'm not gonna freak, but you know, i- if they're the older tanks or even a double wall steel, I don't I'm not quite sure what the date of installation is, and so what sort of they, what would they, what they would have been? But in my the my claims experience, the number of times I've seen this scenario occur, oh, yeah, they've been in the ground forever, you know, we just didn't think about it. And then it's, you know, oil's probably got on the ground. It's not a good story, and it's not something I want to see happen at the school. So let's maybe nail that down.
You know, when I, when I was an energy auditor, one of the first houses I audited, I audited because they were complaining that they had excessive oil usage. And I looked at their oil usage, and I looked at what they had for in what their fill history was, and I said, your burner can't possibly burn that much oil. Um, where's your line? Right through the concrete corroded. Um, the end result of that solution was they cut out the entire slab of the basement, took out a wall, brought in a mini excavator and excavated down to bedrock um in the foundation. It was a, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollar repair of a residential house. It was ugly.
And 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 that's not even the worst case scenario. I I could I could tell war stories, but I'm not gonna take up the whole meeting with it. The the point is, let's let's get some more info. And before we lose our minds, let's get some more information and then we'll we'll talk about it again.
That's gonna vastly change priorities, but it's interesting that you two, and I'm glad, this is why I like to learn from just the looks on both of your faces, Bill and you. I I'm surprised it hasn't be and and Mara, whoever knows about it. I'm not trying to leave anybody.
I just didn't know. I didn't know they had an underground tank. I had no idea.
Right. And no, good to bring it to the forefront before things happen.
When you have old infrastructure, it's one of these things you're gonna have to go through and and think about it. And that one is a prime example. It used to be that was the standard operating procedure, every house, every place. Heating oil tank, sure, out back under the ground. Terrible idea.
Used to drain your engine oil in your driveway too, though. All right.
I'm gonna circle back to, oh, thank you for that. I'm circling back to the floor just for a second, so I know we're talking about that next one.
Get back on topic here. I think we have.
Apologies, sorry about the.
No, 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 it's absolutely the right, good thing to add up, you know, to to bring up. I think it's we need to get back to the agenda.
Yeah, no, that was good to know. Um, just are we considering this? Because they're bringing it forward. I know we have some quotes. Are we thinking we're gonna find money, like leftover money this year? Is that what we're trying to do with this? They're not thinking of adding these totals to the dollar amount of the budget that's already been presented. I guess that's my question. Or for the gym floor, you know, since they have the quotes and it it's something that they want to do, and they brought it forward. We know we had the safety issues with the um bleachers last year, and then we found the money. So I'm just wondering at what status are we do 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 do? Were requesting to refinish and repaint? And they would love to. So I'm just wondering where in the cycle they want us to consider this. Is this with, if we're lucky enough to have leftover money in this year's budget? Or does anybody know that? Or are we, we're not adding it to the total of the budget we already have? I wouldn't think we can do that. And but.
I mean, if I would think if anything, we would do this through the building maintenance fund, it'd be typically, right, Eric? I mean, d- do you know kind of what the intention is here?
So the Board of Selectmen has identified that as one of the key priorities for the building maintenance fund. So presuming that fund gets funded as it's in the budget, there is enough to do that. So that's that's essentially currently budgeted. It's not additional money. Um, the Board of Selectmen did ask that at the same time we do that, they they repair the overhead fans that are in the gymna- gymnasium. Because um anytime you have a super tall building, heat rises and you get a a significant temperature stratification. And the old build, the building was designed initially to have fans to push that heat down to ground level, so you didn't have to to run the heating system as much, but they've elected not to turn the fans on because they're too noisy. Um, and the old fans weren't really all that effective, so the question is, do we at the same time spend the money to replace the fans? Because it makes sense, right? You don't want to just spend thirty thousand dollars on a new gym floor and then move a bunch of heavy equipment onto there to install big fans. So their suggestion is to do both projects at once. It would add approximately ten thousand dollars to the cost that combined that will take a pretty big hit of the money we have in the building maintenance fund. Um, so we will have to shift some other priorities. But that's okay. Um, we can do it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, and uh, so you're saying the ten, I don't, I didn't print the the page.
So so just, yeah, I think if I could ask Eric for some clarification, so they they're asking for us to uh th- there's, they want to choose the uh quote from New England Sports Floor, which is about a twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand dollar quote, and there's an additional quote for six thousand dollars for fans. It it's not clear from this letter, but I presume that that's where the thirty thousand comes from.
No, that's actually, part of that is there's some additional costs that are gonna be uh, you know, engendered because when you get a floor sander to do a gymnasium floor, those are really large three-phase sanders. And they all start with the assumption that we have three-phase power in the gym. We don't. So in addition to the quote, they're doing two things. They're asking that we use a water-based finish, not an oil-based finish, because ultimately they do work a little better. Um, but they're more expensive because they take more quotes, so that increases the price. And we're going to have to supply a three-phase generator um as part of the project and have uh spend some money with the electrician to wire it. So they were assuming that the final cost to refinish the floor was going to be up to thirty thousand dollars, which is why CIP approved that. The Board of Selectmen, in addition, wants to spend around six thousand dollars uh to buy the fans and have Lenco um, you know, install. The ins- installation shouldn't be really expensive, other than they will have to buy, you know, bring in a lift. They will probably have to rent the lift, because I don't think Lenco has a truck-mounted lift, but I don't want them driving that on the gym floor.
So are we thinking timeframe is if this was approved in the summer when the students aren't there? Is that
Yes.
what we're targeting?
Yes.
Have everything in front of me.
And and it sounds like it would be in the next fiscal year and therefore be part of this budget for the with the building maintenance fund, right?
And not additional funding, right? What he said was.
It's in our current
Right.
Budget re- rec- request, right, Eric? Am I misunderstanding that or no?
Correct. It is. If the budget as approved re- as before you right now goes through, that project is basically funded as part of the building maintenance fund.
So am I correct in assuming that we don't have to approve it right now? We're just gonna be hopeful that we can do it? I mean, I unless.
I think I think it's approved as part of the budget, at least the funding would be.
Right, right, the fund, okay. The funding.
And we and we could certainly approve, we could, I suppose we could make a motion for approval to spend the money predicated on the idea that the um budget passes as in its current format for the building maintenance fund.
Mark, that's what I was leading to, because if and that's fine, that's what I kind of want to do, because if it doesn't pass in the same way it is, we still could allocate, you know, we could move funds around if we thought this was a safety issue. You know, we are allowed as a board and Eric, whoever wants to answer this question. You know, if we feel this is a safety issue, something that really has to get done, well, then we just have to take something from somewhere else and say, well, this is a big priority for the town, just like you do in your household. Well, we're gonna do this this year. And then something else is gonna have to. I mean, or is that the way we go into this? Right. We could approve it as long as everything passes and then everything's hunky-dory. But if it doesn't, and we think this is an urgent thing, then we still want to make sure it happens.
Right. You know, it, yeah, so the I just I think.
It's being brought to us as it needs to happen. Sorry, Mark. And I I get it. I take safety seriously.
Yeah, so I think that the funding will come up. This is part of our our normal budget approval process um. As to whether we just approve them moving forward, the expenditure, we can do that, but obviously, that's kind of dependent on the funding, so we can make contingents on the the funding, you know, the budget passing with the you know, sufficient you know, building maintenance on additions.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could do a motion and just say that you'll expend this this project out of the building maintenance fund and leave it generic. And if we get through all the HVAC updates in the town hall, in the fire department, and get refunded by LoSip and fast enough, we'll do it in this budget cycle. If not, we'll do it next budget cycle. Um, but July one is only right after school starts, so it doesn't, it almost doesn't matter.
But is this a safety issue? Is that why we're being, I I wanna, like you said, oh, we can maybe do it this year and that. I want to take it a hundred percent serious. This is being brought to us that they want this done. This is a safe, is it because of a safety issue? Is there pieces coming up on the floor? Or just because we're trying to, you know, I
There is a tripping issue that there that.
I thought I heard that. Thank you very much.
Cause it was like maybe from all the forty-four years of coating it.
Yeah.
Some spots. So they have PE in there all the time. That could be a a hazard and uh you know, we had the Easter egg hunt over the weekend, so that could have been potential hazards. So I don't know. Um, yeah.
Thank you. No, I thought that I had heard something that there was some safety involved with it too. So.
I I doubt it has anything to do with it, but last year by now ten-year-old utterly face planted in that gym. She was running across the floor. I just wiped out, took a header, concussion, the whole nine. Uh, so, yeah, yeah. But that's Megan. She could do that anywhere. So I'm not saying that, right? All I'm saying is that's your, that's your worry. Right? Is that it could get really hurt.
Yeah, just to point out too, that, you know, as it states in the in the uh in the request letter, this full fish floor is forty-six years old.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I- i- it's time.
Right, I mean, and that's why the information is good, because we want to make our decisions, like what's the priority now, you know? Okay, we wanted to do this, but now we've got to pivot, and now we might have to pivot because of what you guys were saying about the underground tanks, like I'm I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying that this, I take this seriously, and that's why I ask the questions, like when I'm making decisions, which, you know, which is gonna stack up. Well, something else can wait, because that's a, that's a want, not a need or something. So thank you. That's all.
We're funded for now, um, if we we proceed with this, so that's good.
Yeah.
Anybody like to make a motion regarding this item?
Um, real quick, do I need to abstain since I'm in the recommission or?
Say that again?
Do you need to abstain? All right.
I don't think so. I don't think there's any kind of conflict of interest, and you certainly are in a good position to understand the issue.
I'll make a motion then to uh approve the uh gymnasium floor and the fans for thirty thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
I I actually think the bill, if you improve it, approve it with the fans, is gonna be in excess of thirty thousand.
Yeah, that's what Eric was explaining, the thirty thousand for the floor finishing and additional services. So there's about another sixty-five hundred dollars for fans. We might want to just approve like a thirty-seven thousand dollar package.
So it's ten thousand dollars.
So I would say forty thousand is probably a more ri- realistic ex- estimate by the time you do that entire project.
Okay.
Okay, you want to state the uh motion, Brian?
Sure, I would like to make a motion to approve the gymnasium floor at Andover Elementary School and the gymnasium fans for forty thousand dollars. Wait, do we say forty? It's forty thousand.
Forty, forty thousand.
All right, perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a second.
My second.
Okay, Rob, seconds. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. The motion passes. The next item then is, we kind of combined two items there, but the item seven C, which is the welcome to Andover sign. You have a nice little graphic pictorial in your uh packet. Now, Eric, we this, we we discussed this at one point.
It was approved last.
Second one that we decided to to fund?
It was, it was funded last year.
All right. Let me explain, and then you can shoot holes in it.
Proceed with your explanation.
I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other. This is not, so last year, the the EDC has tried for many years to fund welcome to Andover signs. They've generally been continually shot down. Um, last year, the Board of Selectmen agreed to fund one sign um, which we're pretty close to signing a contract on.
Hmm.
Then the Economic Development Commission went back to CIP and said, well, you know, you funded the last one out of last year's budget, you should fund the second one out of the next budget. And um, CIP agreed that that was a legitimate and should be a fundable you know, fundable expense. So and they referred it back to Board of Finance um to see whether you would agree with that. Um, this is not budgeted. So I'm I'm gonna tell you that straight out. It's only, you know, another forty-two hundred dollars. Um, so you could add it to the budget, or you could, I guess, try to find somewhere else to be. But if we are going to put up two, it would be smart to have them have the guy build both of them at the same time um and just tell them, you know, we're budgeting one for this year and one for next year, so don't be expecting money for the second one until after July first. Um, which they would do if Board of Finance decided you wanted to fund it. And Robert was on the CIP, so he can probably walk you through the logic for that, but that is what that is. So this is not a budgeted expense. I'm not saying it wouldn't be possible to find the money somewhere. Um, but that that is the request.
No, we could, a- and just for the record, we do not have a a firm budget, so we could always add four thousand dollars to some line item to cover it.
And I think that was our thought at CIP, just as Eric mentioned, you can kind of have our prior funding takes care of sign number one. And then we put something in this year's budget and right after, when July hits, we can you know, fund this, you know, pay for the second sign. And the only other thing that came up aside CIP, and Eric, I know you remember this, was w- whether, you know, there was a little minor installation detail detail that Jay brought up that you know, we were gonna go back to the contractor. I don't know if that's happened. Uh, but there was gonna be a little bit of a discussion about how deep to bury it and and whatnot, but other than, I don't think it was something we anticipated that would affect the project cost or affect it dramatically. So I thought the, if we do add this to this year's budget to put like forty-five hundred uh just to be sure, uh, because I think it's forty-two fifty is the request.
Right, that's that's what they gave the town for an installed.
Yeah, it's probably to make sense, the nickel and dime, they off, although I would where where did we fund the last purchase out of, Eric? We paid that out of the building maintenance fund?
We did. We did.
So we would just, I mean, we could just add forty-five hundred to the building maintenance fund uh so the sign number two could go in. That would be my thought and and my gut reaction to all of this. I mean, CIP approved it. We agreed with the idea, seems fine. Uh, it's literally just the same sign. You know, number two. And I think that's it, right? I don't think Elaine's coming back for her third sign, is she?
I hope not.
What? Now, there was two. One was gonna be down by the old dog pound, is that correct? And the other one's gonna be up somewhere on three sixteen, Eric, isn't that what we said?
Uh, one of them will be across. That was kind of strange.
That was great, well.
Who did that? I didn't do that.
You pushed a button.
I did.
I'm not losing nothing.
Okay, so.
I'm looking at spreadsheets. I missed something good. Go ahead.
Board of Selectmen has gone back and forth multiple times about where they would allow the first sign to be put in. They made the decision to do it on that little piece of town property uh right next to over Andover. Um, so that is where the first sign is going in. Uh, I don't think they have agreed on a location for the second sign. They will have to argue with the. They will have to argue with the EDC over sign location if it gets approved.
Uh, Eric, wasn't, I remember it's CIP and maybe this, maybe I thought this was done and I guess it's not done. I thought the second sign idea was at the end of, um, Shoddy Mill?
I think that was one of the locations that was considered. But I don't think the Board of Selectmen has blessed any second location yet.
Okay.
Um, they tend to cogitate on that for a while before they make decisions.
Um, and just for a little context for this discussion, so our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget line item for the building maintenance fund was one hundred and eight thousand dollars. The twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five proposed budget line item is one hundred thousand dollars. So we're, we're down um, from last year in the current proposed budget. So if we're gonna add something in, I would suggest we just round it up to the thousand dollar amount. We could do a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Right.
Don't have to decide tonight, but we certainly could, um, if somebody wants to, to make a motion to follow up on that or we can
I just wanna comment.
Yep.
All I was gonna say is we haven't even you know, I have a feeling we're gonna be having debating on the, the budget. We haven't even really gotten into any of that stuff yet. So it's hard to, to make the decision tonight based on just all the things that are gonna go forward. It's not a lot of money. It's just that, cuz I listen to all that you guys know, I tell you that it took forever to even come up with when they want the sign. So when I was in all the debates and I'm so happy for Elaine that this has happened, she's put a lot of effort and time into it. But I guess I missed that I go to all these meetings. So was it just at CIP that they decided, let's go for a second sign? Cuz that I didn't hear at all.
That, that was last week, Joy, and that literally just happened.
I gotcha. So and, and I know Elaine had mentioned in the past, they want two signs. And of course, that does all make sense. If you're doing it, just get it done if it's four thousand. But I'm not willing to add money to the budget yet when we, I, I'm thinking maybe can we find it out of another line and just kind of move it in there? And, you know, so, uh, unless you guys wanna add in and then we end up taking somehow as we debate and talk, I, that's my only thought.
My thought is, is let's just not forget it. So, you know, get it on the agenda in so, in, in, in a specific way or add it to the budget provisionally or something. But I agree, I don't, I don't know that we want to approve it
Right.
today when we haven't done our line by line.
That's what I'm saying.
Go through the budget, which I, like, I, I'm following you. I, I agree. Uh, but I think ultimately I want to approve it, but, um, maybe the idea is that we, we've heard it, we table it for now. I just, if we table it, I don't wanna forget, I wanna get lost in the shuffle. And we forgot to add five thousand dollars somewhere and it doesn't happen. So
And I'm thinking about the work.
On the agenda.
I'm, I kept, I put a note in my, in the budget file, just I'm keeping track of some line item notes. So, you know, we can, I can bring that up next time we actually talk about the budget. We said, I think we, we're at the point we need to start going through line by line by line. Uh, you know, you know, just
I don't wanna change that whole first page, you know, over five thousand dollars or whatever, our starting point, you know? That's, that's my thought, Rob, but thank you. Yeah, we could bring it back. Bring it back another meeting with that notation.
Fine by me.
Alright, well, if everybody's in agreement with that, then, then we can move on. Otherwise, if, you know, somebody could make a motion, but otherwise we'll, uh, we'll move on.
Yeah.
Louise?
Is there any cost effectiveness to doing both of them at the same time? No?
Yeah.
Um, if, if we did them both at the same time, they'll do them both for the same cost. I don't necessarily know if we came back in a year, we, whether we'd get the same cost or not. Um, you know, and are they gonna look identical if they're made?
Different times, yeah. That's the concern I would have, yeah.
Right, so I, I mean, I would say either you like the idea and you're willing to fund it or you don't, you know, you're not really interested in it. You don't do it.
Well, we already made the decision. We're gonna wait on it, right?
Yeah, we didn't vote on that, right? We just
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna still talk about it and then once we hit our line by line stuffs, I guess, or whatever, yeah. Okay.
Okay, further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, I guess we'll move on to agenda item eight, which is the administrator's report, Eric.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna go over the stuff that's, uh, actively Board of Finance related. Um, so we did submit a grant, um, to Lotzip for the Route three sixteen connectivity project. Um, I've been told unofficially that we will get that. Um, I have not been told officially that. But, um, that's around a two-point-nine million dollars grant. So that would be super cool if we get it. Um, still an awful lot of work that would have to happen before we get to construction. So I wouldn't think you're gonna see any excavators in motion for at least a couple of years. But at least the funding source is secure, um, probably.
Um, what's, what's the concept for the work to be done there, Eric? Do we have a concept and a design and all preliminary?
Yeah, we do. Basically, it will be a multi-use pathway that runs from the town hall, the school, down the road, down along Route three sixteen to Cider Mill Road. Um, then goes down Cider Mill Road and then picks up another pathway that runs down three sixteen. And it makes a connection under the rail trail just before you get to the bridge.
Right.
Um, the problem is, is that even though it's a fairly short path, it is an incredibly expensive thing to build because it's gonna be a couple of bridges in an elevated section uh, getting over a wetland. So it's just, um, you know, um, but it fits right in the center of what that application is for. Um, and it's also the only project really that the town could try to fund through that particular budget or that particular grant program. Um, because the other alternative for that is a straight roadwork project. But we actually don't have any road, roads that really qualify. Because we're just too rural, so, um, and I've made a number of attempts to get DOT to upgrade some of our roads to quote unquote be major collectors, so I could fund projects on them. But, you know, every time I've done it, made him do a traffic study, the road, they come back to me and say, yeah, no, still not a major collector, uh, pound Sam. So that's a big grant. Um, we also submitted a rec trails grant kind of as a backup to design a second, an alternative trail. If the Lotzip grant didn't get funded. I mean, my gut tells me we're not gonna get that funded, even though it's a really good idea. Um, rec trails grants are incredibly overprogrammed. Um, and they're very hard to get. So far, if this one fails, I will be oh-for-four trying to get money out of the rec trails program. Um, so, but you know, you gotta keep trying. Um, we also submitted a really little grant, something called the micro grant to the Department of Transportation to fund a little bike share program for the town. Um, if we get it, it will be fully funded, so it won't be anything that requires taxation. I have no idea whether we'll get it or not, but it was worth the application. Um, the next major grant we're going after is something called the brick grant. And my goal for that is to fund the, uh, remaining, uh, to fund a new generator for the municipal complex. So one that works for the fire department, the com- new community center and the town hall. Um, and at the same time, I'm gonna try to pu- put as part of that same grant the money to finish off the community center so it can function as an emergency shelter. Um, the, the problem is those grants are really heavily weighted towards distressed communities. So the workaround is to submit it through our congressional or basically our state senate. So we are working with Murphy's office on submitting that as a legislative appropriation at the federal level. Um, so that's not something, an avenue the town has tried before. Um, so, um, and it, it's still competitive, but it's a lot less competitive to do it that way. I've been told flat out, I wouldn't, we wouldn't get the brick grant if we submitted it without that. So that's where we're going with that. So, um, if we get that, um, we probably wouldn't, realistically, we wouldn't have the money for about a year. Um, but if it saves us, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, we can spend a little time to, to get. So that's going on, the community center uh, is, you know, coming along well. They're drywalling it currently. So we've passed most of the major milestones. Um, and if you looked at the front of the building, you would see it's pretty close to the final grades now and you can kind of see what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna lay out. Um, uh, other than that, I don't really have anything. Um, other than I did, we were in discussion today with, with Jed Larson from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Planner. Um, most of you know the town uh, has been struggling to get the contractor and the owner of the gravel pit that was permitted next to the extramar on Route six to properly finish that off. Um, I suspect the town is gonna start running up legal fees um, forcing him to do that. Um, we've done everything we could do cheaply. Um, and we're kind of at loggerhead. So I suspect we're gonna end up in a lawsuit with that individual to force compliance. Uh, but I don't see a lot of alternative because the abutting property owner is Catherine Hutchinson, who's, uh, um, an extremely sharp legal mind and still a federal judge. Um, and I'm pretty sure that you know, either we're gonna sue the owner or Catherine's gonna end up suing the town. So I would rather be the suitor than the suitor. So that will affect the budget. Um, you know, we may end up depending on whether that hits this fiscal year or next fiscal year. Um, we may end up having to shift money in around to cover legal expenses. Um, but that's basically all I have. Um, unless you have other questions or concerns for me.
True. Eric, uh, just a couple of quick questions on the connectivity grant that we hopefully are gonna get. Uh, you said it was about a three million dollar grant, two-point-nine, I think you said. Uh, is that, that's a hundred percent grant? It's not, there's no match?
It is a hundred percent. It funds a hundred percent of the construction costs. It does not fund design, which is why I worked really hard to get a legislative grant to fund preliminary design. And we should get most of the way through. I don't know whether we'll get to final design out of the existing pool of money I have. But if not, we're gonna get pretty close. So if the town has to lay out any money for the project, um, it will be very small.
It'll be design work, okay? Um, and then the second follow-up question I have for you is you, you mentioned, um, you know, there's a few little foot bridges or whatever that'll have to be involved in this project. Uh, it, it brings to mind the question of O and M costs going forward, once it's built. Do we have any sort of sense for the order of magnitude of what we might be looking at there? Cuz that would be on us, right? That's not, the state's not gonna fund our O and M.
Uh, probably not, probably that is on us. Although the so there is one, either one or two bridges that are potentially would end up being on us afterward for maintenance. Um, you know, and we are at basically adding the equivalent of about point five miles of a single lane to our existing thirty-four miles, thirty-four and a half miles of double lane. So you could think about this as roughly a one percent increase in paved surface. So there is maintenance as- associated with that, although it is lower for pathway than it is for a road because it doesn't get the weight of traffic on.
You're not gonna have trucks going on this thing, right?
Right. Um, but the bridges, yes, we would be on the hook for the bridges. Um, we would, you know, these are pedestrian-style bridges, so they are an order of magnitude cheaper than anything designed to take the weight of an automobile. Um, and we would probably be just buying, you know, pre-made Conex steel bridges um, and dropping them in on micro piling. So we're not, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. You just buy those by the length.
Right. Okay, I mean, I just, you know, it's just something to think about. Uh, you know, if this happens, when it happens, we're, we're years out probably. But it won't be zero. We'll have to build it into our budgeting for capital or whatever to keep it up. Uh, presumably, so.
Yep.
Thanks.
That was, that was my follow-up question, Eric. I know I went to the, the meeting, Louise and I attended that meeting, that the one meeting you had about that, um. And you had said, well, this will take clearly, it's a lot of money that will be given to the town, the two-point-nine, but this will take town approval. This would be another meeting thing that has to, I know you did a lot of the preliminary work. We went ahead and submitted the grant, but then it has to come before the town in a meeting, right? Because it's gonna change the look of the whole in a, in a beautiful way. But like we said at the meeting, it involves like going through people's front yards and pathways and all of that. So does it have to be approved at the meeting? Or no?
My suspicion is it does because it's similar to, so the two things that trip requirement for a town meeting that are related to this would be if you know, let's say they were gonna, willing to fund eighty percent of the construction and the town was on the, wanting. Before I could accept the grant, the town would have to agree to that because it's committing town funds.
Okay.
Because we've basically funded design. Um, and we will have funded construction. I think actually the town residents will not see any bills for doing this project. I think I've managed to essentially one hundred percent fund it. Which kind of astounds me, but, um, but that's a good thing.
Well, that's a great thing. I just, yeah, okay, so.
But the other thing that trips a requirement for a town meeting is a town meeting is required to accept a new road. And I believe a multi-use, so i- in, and it's not quite analogous because usually a, a new road comes about because you have a subdivision and they put in new roads as part of the subdivision and then the town has to officially accept the work. And I was actually looking through the wording in the charter to see whether it was something that had to go to a town meeting. Um, I think you could argue it either way. But ultimately, I would prefer to go to a town meeting. You know, when we, before we go to construction um, and go in with the final plans and say, you know, this is what we're looking to approve. It's not costing you money, but it does affect the town. So I would hope we go to town meeting on it.
Right, right. And I don't wanna get, I know we're getting along in our agenda and all some, no, thank you for that. I understand that. But kind of like Rob said, it will eventually affect like everything else. When we put up the community center, then we're gonna have funding that's gonna be part of the budget every year. And so it'd be nice to have that, although it's a great get if you do it, it just affects the whole look of the town too. So, yeah, thank you for that, Eric. For the explanation.
Yep.
Other questions for Eric? Hey, you got anything else, Eric?
Nope, that's it. Unless you got questions.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to item nine liaison report. So Rob sounded like you had something to talk about.
Yeah, uh, so at CIP last week, uh, we talked about the school plumbing. Now, I think I've mentioned you guys a couple of times. I got wind of this. Uh, I don't think I had the full scope of it. I'm not sure the school did at the time, but I talked to you about it. They had a repair done. Eric mentioned this in the context of a, you know, insurance claim, but, uh, in the context of that repair, I think some. I think it came out that there was more damage than was realized. And there are, there are at least three key things that are wrong with the plumbing. In the oldest section of the school. That are causing leaks and whatnot. Uh, one of which is a leak of sewage, which is not good. So the guesstimate, and I I I understand this to be a guesstimate, a very fuzzy number. Is that it could be a two hundred thousand dollar project, give or take. Um. Eric, in the con- in our C I P meeting, Eric mentioned that given the. Kind of project it is and the potential scope of it. His gut is that we should get a. Mechanical extra- uh, electrical plumbing engineer. To do kind of a full survey and work plan. Which might cost us. Oh, I forgot, Eric, what was your guesstimate, fifteen K?
My guess is that's gonna be around fifteen K, but I could be off on that, I mean, that's just based on. Hiring MEPs before to do something of similar scope.
And then, once we have that. Then we'll know what to, what to put out for RFP. Uh, what to put out for, uh, you know, to forbid, because. Our understanding is that the contractor who did the spot repair. His gut, his reaction is, look, I can't give you a bid to tell you how to fix this, unless I understand the full scope of the problem. And he hasn't done the deep dive and maybe not, I don't know if he even feels qualified to do it, hence the MEP. Solution to this. It sounds like a pretty serious problem, there's seventy year old cast iron pipe involved. Um. So anyway, long story short. You're talking something that is significantly more expensive and also much more pressing than a parking lot. Based on that, I think that moves into number one on the priority list for A E S. Uh, you know, and the parking lot. We, you know, you do some, so some basic, I think they already did it. Some basic, you know, spot repairs and 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 let it ride, because this thing is worse. And needs to get dealt with in a big way, you got three bathrooms apparently that are unusable at this time. In the school. So. Step one would be. Uh, when we left it. Last Thursday night. There was a hope that the contractor who has been helping us with the problem might be able to get in. Monday this week and look at it, Eric, did that happen?
Um, I did leave a message for the plumber today, he has not responded to me.
Okay, so.
So the school put some conditions on when he could come into it.
Contractors get busy, school has its own issues, right, so it hasn't happened, basically, is the answer.
Well, I don't know whether it's happened or not, frankly, um, I am following up with it. And I'm also looking for actively looking for an MEP. Um, and trying to get estimates. You know, a couple of different ways, one is using our in-house engineering firm. Who has an and does not have a staff MEP, but has an MEP that consults for them. Um, and getting an estimate from them, and then um, looking at a couple local, uh. Contractors asking them what MEPs. You know, they've worked for in the past that they found success, so my goal. Right now is to secure an MEP. Figure out what it's gonna cost and get a scope of, oh, a repair scope and a repaired design. Um, and also see whether we can actually get the original blueprints.
Oh, right, right, Celeste was gonna get back to you on that, that's right. So, yeah, that's the big question, is we don't really know. We have a general sense now of the problem. I would not claim that we have the full, we've delineated the full scope. We, we, you know, since the contractor went in there, did some repair work. We now know it's worse than we thought originally, when I first heard about this problem, it was described to me as a fifty thousand dollar problem. It's now two hundred thousand dollar, maybe, we don't know.
Well, I mean, we're already into it for thirty five thousand dollars, it's just the initial hit was. On the insurance company because it was an active sewage spill in the school.
Right, so, exactly, so. Now we are in the situation of, you know, when we're looking at the school, these is supposed to be working up their capital plan. This one has to be at the top of the list, you have a sewage leak, you have plumbing problems, you have water damage issues. You know, that could come from this thing, right now, I know there's been some repair done, it may not be. Super acute, but it's not gonna, I I can't imagine us to hold. Uh, given the age and the fact that we've already have all these problems, so. Anyway, the upside of the C I P meeting was, gosh, this has to go at the top of the list. And it has the potential to eat every dollar that the school and the town are putting in that fund this year.
Wow, okay, well, this is why we wanna. Have these meetings and get the information, was there a school person, thank you, Rob, was there? The school personnel there to present with you?
Yeah, Celeste, Celeste presented it.
Okay, no, that's good, I mean, that's what we want to happen.
Shannon was there too, but Celeste was there to to kind of explain from her perspective, and then Eric chimed in. With his understanding of the situation.
Is there, does the school generally agree on the priority at this point, or based on what they know, I know it's early?
Well, my understanding is that the Board of Ed has discussed it. But they haven't formally agreed that the priority is not the parking lot anymore. Um, I will throw one other thing in the mix, I did have a discussion with Jay Tuttle, the Public Works Supervisor. And I said, if, you know, because. As part of the scope of repairing that. We were gonna go after some catch basins that are having some issues. Um, so what we did say is that. Even if we don't do the parking lot this year. Um, Public Works will take on the catch basin repair. Um, and replace the basin tops, because a couple of them are sinking. Um, and we do have to bring up the grade. Um. You know, so it's the parking lot works better. So that will be done. Um, if we don't pave it. If we do pave it, that would be part of the scope of the contractor hired, if we don't, Public Works will take it on. And we'll use our in-house paving contractor. To repave the areas we cut out to repair the catch basins.
And just, those are just the drains, right, those are, that's gonna be a small, yeah, okay.
So, had we known that these bathrooms weren't, just to understand the problem too. Because now we're hearing of all these problems now that we, and I glad we are, we wanna fix them. Now that the ideas of capital program, you know, capital improvements are happening. So people are looking at these things clo- more closely, have we known, Eric, that they've had inoperable bathrooms? For a while, I know for a while enrollment was down and there was an area of the school that was shut down. Um, again. Huge problem, I'm in definitely exactly why I want this to work, you know, the the emergencies need to be attended to first. But all of a sudden, now, now we're getting into. We're gonna look at the whole building and, you know, see, because that. Get a design plan, I mean, I understand these things, I've seen bids in different, and and I get that, and it kind of secondary to what Mark said, are, is. A E S, have they been reporting this has been a huge problem, they've wanted this, and is this their priority? And I'm not saying that we have to go with that. But when we get this information, this is how my brain works, like it's all of a sudden, we've got all this. And I'm definitely for the emergencies getting taken care of first.
Yeah, sounds like it's a little preliminary, we'll probably have to get more information to really. Go forward for all of us, yeah.
So. I I'm just wondering, um. When, when you have something like this. Is it totally the Board of Ed's discretion on whether they fix that or not, or does a town have any say, the town owns the building? The safety of this, of the students' town's responsibility, I mean. Where, where does the Board of Ed's uh authority? Like. Or in our, the town's authority, where do they cross, I I guess I'm confused about that, because you talk about things like even the oil tank now. That.
That's huge.
Earlier, now that, that could take precedent over in my mind, the the leaky bathroom, because. You, that could be millions of dollars to clean that up, I know, cause I know somebody that had an oil tank leak, I know someone. And it is huge money, so I'm I'm just wondering, when it comes to the property that the town owns. And the safety and the hazards and all that, where does the line get drawn here, the board that said, well, we want a parking lot, we don't wanna fix. You know, a leaky oil tank, or we don't wanna fix. Uh, you know, sewage problems, so I guess I'll shut up now and just ask.
I think, I think I'm gonna, gonna guess, sorry, Rob, I'll kind of, you know, ultimately, it's gotta get funded, right? And it's gotta get funded, you know, kind of with the agreement of the the taxpayers on the, and the. You know, and the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed, you know, and the administration all working together, I think, so.
Try to get at it, is who, who has the authority? You know, to prioritize and things like that, and and actually, this speaks to exactly the issues that Shannon and I have been trying to work out in the, in the, in the. That capital, you know, plan, uh, or rather, how to use the capital funds. Because the state statutes and the town charter say certain things. Um, the, the state statutes carve out for the Board of Ed. Of any given town, their responsibility. To, for the buildings and grounds. Now, does that mean? Does that include capital, does that, is that, does that maintenance? Or does that include major capital expenditures, my read of it, her read of it, you know, this is part of the issue, actually. What does our charter say, and how does it lay out the 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 responsibilities? Long story short, I mean, ultimately, what Mark said is right, we're we're all just gonna have to come together on this, but. As to the question of. If the Board of Ed prioritizes in a way that we think is wrong or what have you. What happens? I don't know. Um. Open to interpretation, I would say, uh, and we could, we could talk about. Uh, state statute. Or an over town charter stuff at some point, uh, at another time, but um, that's exactly the issue, actually.
And I only brought it up, Rob.
What, what their bailiwick is and where it ends. Is a really important question that feeds into all of these other things that we're dealing with.
But this is exactly why I'm glad. We wanna make sure that if an emergency or a safety, like Bill said, hazard yourself involved too. Comes for the children of the town, then all bets are off, right? And so that's, that was the only reason I asked that question, I wasn't like, oh, let them decide. I'm trying to, trying to honor them, like, was it on their priority list, but also understanding if it's an emergency, we've gotta kind of act, I would hope, so. That is interesting.
I meant to answer your question there, actually, um. I don't, this is slowly kind of developed. Months and months ago. I think I mentioned it at one of our meetings, that I had a conversation with Val. And she was telling me about this bathroom problem. And that was the first time I'd heard.
Hmm.
Um. Because the school has not had. A capital plan. Right, we didn't have a document in front of us to say, hey, Board of Finance, here are our priorities, and we're putting this at the. None of that exists, we want that to exist, we want that to come into being, we need that to happen, but we didn't have it. So what I. Got from this originally. Was Val just talking my ear off about various things at the school and mentioning to me. And we have this problem in the boys' bathroom, at the time, it was the boys' bathroom specifically, it was a urinal. That turns out to be like a third of the problem, if that. Uh, it turns out there's more going on. And she didn't know that at the time either. It wasn't until the contractor came in. To, I think. Investigate and repair, then it turns out, wait a minute. Rot row, there's this, that, and the other.
Hmm.
And that's what's been, I'll be brought to, and and for my, as far as I know. Our C I P meeting this week was the first time I heard that the scope. Had ballooned like this.
Yeah.
And Eric, I don't know if you've heard, if you, you have a different timeline, but that's my time.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so basically what happened is. Around in the mid, sometime in December. Um, I was discussing a series of projects with Rick Wilson, cause we use my tech. Um, his plumbing service for some things, and they're doing the community center. And he asked me what we were doing about the elementary school. And I said. Don't know what you're talking about, and he said, oh. Um. They have a really significant problem there, they've got three bathrooms that are closed off. Um, there's gonna end up being a really expensive repair to get that fixed. And that was the first, so I didn't hear about it from the school. Once. Rick told me that that issue was occurring. I went back to the school and said, we've asked you multiple times for a capital plan. You're not giving it to us. Let's at least have a meeting. And figure out right now, what are the issues? You wanna get done, and what do you, you know, because I know you're interested in the parking lot. And I know you have concerns, well, I know there's a plumbing issue in some form or another that has to be done with. Let's get it all on paper, so I met with Celeste. And Superintendent and Steve Campbell. Um, and we talked through kind of their laundry list of things that they had concerns with. And then I asked that Celeste give it back to me. In letter form from the Board of Ed and say, these are the issues that we anticipate having and that we know. And then I walked to the building with Steve Campbell, because he's the head. You know, custodian, and asked him questions about a whole bunch of things. You know, and he pointed out some roof leaks and a bunch of other things we weren't talking about that are kind of on his radar. Um, you know, as well as some of the sections of flat roof, so. You know, they still need to put together a capital plan for that building. So we understand, you know, what we're really in for. But in the short term, it seems like there's two things. That are, you know, pressing, the first is that there are three sets of bathrooms in that building. Boys' bathroom, a girl's bathroom, and then one of the sets of teacher bathrooms. That are off limits and the plumbing has been disconnected. Because Rick basically said, look, all the cast iron plumbing is completely rotted out in that original section of the building. He said, as far as he. His gut tells him that it all needs to be replaced. Um. You know, so the question I had for him is, is this an application where we can s- could consider? Bringing in a company to just reline them? And use a polyethylene liner? And he said he didn't think there was enough structural left to that, to consider that, but. You know, he also basically said, look, this is. You know, this is above my pay grade, you know, I'm happy to to bid on the work. But you need to bring an engineer in, and you need to develop a scope of work. Um, and a plan and a set of schematics. Um, and then, then I'm happy to bid and do the work, but until then. I'm not touching, and I suspect most plumbers will be in that. You know, that's, this is a commercial building. Um, it's old, it's gonna need pretty extensive repairs, you need an engineered solution for it.
Understood, no, thank, that gives a great overview, of course, anytime you have an old structure, old buildings, just like you went through us with the town hall and all the repairs. You know, it, it, right, it's just at what. Time do you get the plan, when, you know, do you, I understand the concept of don't put a Band-Aid on something, and then in in two months, you're gonna have to just. Tear it all out to make the big repair, it's just at what. So, thank you, I just kind of wanted the timeline of hearing complaints or. You know, how big the problem had gotten, it had had been a real inconvenience at the school. Or what's been going on, you know, so you said December, and, no, it sounds good, I mean. This is why we started the capital plan and why emergencies need to be. Attended to first, so. I'm good on all of that, there's nothing more we can do on it tonight, but thanks for all the overview.
Yeah, so heads up, everybody.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, uh, Rob. Uh, anything else from the board liaison reports? Okay, we'll move on to board open discussion, does anybody have anything specific to bring before the board we haven't already discussed?
I was just gonna say, nothing, nothing long, I thought, and I'm sure you were gonna bring this up too, and Eric usually does at the end. You know, kind of to set our tone for our, is it next Wednesday, I don't have the calendar, we have another budget workshop. Meeting.
Right.
Um, cause we. You know, we did a pretty good timeline for tonight, so we'll get ready for that. My only request was gonna be, um, I know, Mark, if you agree on this, or you think this is too preliminary. Obviously, we'll be, all of us will be bringing our questions or maybe items that we wanna talk about. Um, a couple that I'd like to see come before the board. Is, and I, I was trying to open my spreadsheet on the side, I know there's a couple. Is, and I I was trying to open my spreadsheet on the side. I know there's a couple things that. Eric, remind me. You know how we said we wanted to hear from the people? So I know that the town clerk. We had done a big thing last last year and we. Signif- she got a significant raise, you know, well deserved and we're glad about that. I forget if she had another big request. So I was at some point, maybe at talk to her. That doesn't have to be next week. But. Is it the registrar of voters, Eric? Someone else. Requested kind of a significant thing, so I was just gonna ask to hear why, because I know we significantly raised them last year too.
Well, I think it's because they, we have additional voting days. We have to, we have to fund them because of the state requirements, right?
So I will, I will look at it. It wasn't opening for me while I was listening to other things. So if I have any specific questions, I'll get back to that. Those two came to mind just to get the rationale, but maybe, maybe it's not needed once I look at it and, you know, review, so.
Mark, do you want me to respond? So I did ask the town clerk, I told her that you would probably. Uh, want to speak to her at the next meeting, because I know you had said in a previous meeting you wanted to talk to the town clerk. So she is expecting to uh be at the next budget meeting. Um, which I think is the third. Yes, is the third.
Right.
Um, and I also told Jed Larson, because I know you, some of you had expressed some significant. Uh, concern about the open space fund. So I thought it appropriate that you hear directly from the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. On why they think funding that is appropriate. Um, if you wanna talk to the registrars at the next meeting, I will tell them uh that they need to be on. I will tell you that.
Let me review it tomorrow, you know, unless other people do. I'll review the figures tomorrow and see. I thought it was a significant increase, so I was just gonna. Because I knew we had significantly increased them last year too. So I just try to get it in there.
The registrars is up significantly. Um, although remember, because we separate revenue and expenses. We are, we do have extra revenue in from the state to pay for that. Um, but part of the problem is we are now required to have.
Early voting.
You know, instead of one day of voting, um, like for the presidential preference primaries. Which are going on right now and you can come vote tomorrow if you want. Um. Um, I already voted. Um. But that's really expensive, because instead of staffing for one day, we're staffing for five days. And when we get to the actual presidential elections, we will be staffing for fifteen days. Instead of for one day is in the past. So it is a lot more expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, those are my only thoughts. I guess we'll get back into the budget things, um.
Yeah, when we get to that line on it, we should put a notation in, you know, like, okay, this is going up by X, but we're receiving Y. From the state. And then we can really, that's how you evaluate, you know, what's the net?
Other than that.
Hey, any other questions for the board, board open discussion?
Are there anything else specifically that you want me to have prepped for you? Or get you additional information ahead of time for the next budget meeting?
Can we have till Friday to get that to you, that request to you, Eric?
Uh, well, Friday is technically a holiday.
Right, that's, this is true.
I will be working the morning of. Uh, Friday, because I have two commitments, but I don't wanna work any longer than I have.
No, no, I mean, then I'll try to have if I have any requests, but I mean, I know we receive our packets the day before, so I'm just. I just need a little bit of time, not always, but I mean.
I think anything we can get to Eric in advance, even if you don't think about it until Monday or Tuesday.
Thank you.
Just gonna help him prepare a little bit, because we're gonna ask him one way or the other. So. You know, even if he doesn't have a chance to research it before Wednesday's meeting, it at least gives him a little bit of heads up, so. You know.
That's a much.
For all of us, it is better. And the only thing I would say about next week is we really probably need to start rolling down through these line by line. You know, there's a lot of lines. I don't think we wanna spend much time on the ones that are. You know, five hundred dollars, thousand dollars or no change, but I think that the any of the significant changes Eric's already addressed the top ten. But I think we need to start rolling down and just make sure we're comfortable with them. And if there's any that are people are concerned about, let's let's try to. Iron it out and start start knocking it out, like, you know, and then, you know, we've we've gotta get through this, you know, it's it's. There's nothing super surprising. We've already talked about the big changes, but we do need to start running, running it down.
Sounds good.
All right, um, just because it's board open discussion, I don't know if if, uh. One idea that I thought we could look at to generate some more time. Potential revenue for the town. I don't know if anybody else saw this, but I see that the town of Tallinn, their, um. I think it's their conservation commission is now issuing permits to trap Bigfoot. For ten dollars each and I gotta tell you, there's enough enthusiasts out there that if we try to put something like that up.
I didn't see that.
It's a real opportunity. Do that one before the board of selectmen. I think what I added a line item in the budget.
Good ones.
Trapping permits, so. That's our little joke for the end of the day.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody have anything else? If not, we will, uh, our next agenda item is correspondence. I don't have any, anybody have any other correspondence we haven't discussed? Public speak, looks like we still do not have any members of the public in attendance. Okay, I guess we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Bill makes a motion. Louis seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much, folks. Appreciate it. Uh, have a good holiday.